Welcome to Park County's own Hurricane Hill Botanicals. Where it's been said you'll find the best handcrafted soap on the planet. In addition to that, we've got a great selection of essential oils, body care products, even CBD products. Can't miss out on our big selection of herbal teas, smudge sticks, even incense. Check our website for hours.
This is facial station and we're gonna talk about insurance. You're, you got the show.
I got the show, okay. Well, my name's Doug Greer and I think there's quite different subjects we're gonna talk about tonight or?
Well, the reason we got the whole meeting together was we had, of course, you know, the fire truck accident. We've had one off on work comp and it was just brought up at one of our regular meetings that they feel it needs to be looked into because the benefit is kind of not real, real good.
Okay, so, okay, wanted to make sure I do more about the fireman's, uh, whether it be work comp or the accidental. That, that's why I had Kirsten mail both policies to you.
Yes.
On that part. Plus, I also know that the renewal is next month, so I did bring the renewal for the regular package also for you on that particular case too. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start a little bit off subject, a little on that fire loss, fire truck loss. That's one of the reasons why, uh, brought it up that we tried to uh, re- remit the captain on the renewal to try to get a true value of what we think those replacement costs dollars because when you first bought that fire truck, it was, I think you bought it for like, what, two seventy give or take?
No, it was three twenty.
Three twenty, and so we were insuring him for that and then we didn't increase it when we needed to and then when you had the total loss, it was like a four hundred thousand dollar loss and that's why, like last year when we met, we wanted to make sure we had the right values down in the initial and I said, Ma, I said, make sure, you tell me what to do because the emergency vehicles are insured on replacement cost.
Yeah.
Okay, and so sometimes we get stuck on what we paid for him, not knowing how to go up on it, so that was, trying to get back on that one, so I know we increased the values on.
Yeah, and then I sent you the new figures, cause Skip had worked up new figures for next year with the new truck and the equipment on it and.
And the renewal is based upon those changes and everything in that, on that basis, okay? And, and your renewal really looks good as far as the package goes. Based upon the changes, they, they, there was like seven buildings that they wanted to increase values on and I included the cost estimators in those for that, okay? So now we'll get back to the really, the real reason why the meeting is, and that is for whether it be workers' compensation or the accidental medical insurance, okay? The way the, the law works is that generally you have workers' compensation and that covers a hundred percent of the medical bills. Okay, that's what workers' comp does. And the firemen and the policemen, workers' comp only covers medical bills for that part, for them. That's why you, you're, it's, you're really only paying for the medical portion of the workers' comp on that part, and that's why then you buy the, uh, accident policy for policemen or the firemen, okay? And then, and then those accident policies, just like workers' comp, those parts always generally have something. Under workers' comp, you'd always get two thirds of your wages, under the accident, they have a set wage in there to what you would get on a weekly basis. And then, and then they also then will pay for a certain amount of disability time off or anything like that. Workers' comp generally would pay two thirds of your wages, like I said, and then the accident policy pays a cer- a certain percentage of a weekly income. And then once the injury is completed, then there's determination if there's any type of permanent disability or partial disability, and generally they got set uh, dollar amounts on how they would pay that amount toward that, okay? I know, I don't, I don't know if this claim is closed yet, cause I asked Mark to give me something on it. Last I saw, there, there was a, a certain payment just went out. Maybe a month ago on it.
It's not, he had to have surgery again on, who was that, September?
November?
November.
I think in November.
He had scar tissue issues or whatever, so they had to do surgery again and then I think he's gotta do more therapy. They send me notifications with an update, it's, I know it's not closed, but it's kind of at a point where he's gotta go back for review and then.
So, I'm not speaking for him, but I think what some of the concern is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, cause you've heard, we ha- well, the, the fire department has certain volunteers that if they don't have medical coverage at their own job or time at their own job, some of the workman's comp, do we have the accident policy? Doesn't cover enough for them to be off of work, meaning they wouldn't be able to make their normal bills or just normal basic bills, I guess, or even living grocery wise and especially for, we'll use this example, a family of four.
Right.
Um, so I think that's where the concern is with you're asking for volunteers, but if they don't.
Okay.
They just need to make sure that it, they're covered if, for instance, they're younger workers and don't have a good medical plan where they're working or like, cause their concern is being hurt and then not getting any income and not being able to make their bills.
So, we're talking more about the disability portion of the policy, not really the medical portion.
Yes, yes.
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 But like you said, state Indiana only allows so much on workman's comp. And that's all.
The percentage of their actual wages.
Percentage of their wages.
But, but getting back to it, some people might have a different paying job.
Absolutely, yeah.
Something like that, okay?
Yes, yeah, because, I mean, on the volunteer basis, you know, you're gonna have, everybody's at a different income level in their life and age and different circumstances with families, obviously.
Okay.
Um, so I guess that, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, for that type of coverage, it's not workman's comp that we're really counting on, it would be more of the accidental policies or something.
It's the accidental, it's the accident policy that actually renews in November is the one is you're really referring to.
Okay.
The workers, because the work comp policy only covers the medical.
Right.
And, and they, and they'll have to continue to pay the medical, even if it's a second injury or third injury or anything like that.
Okay.
Generally, when it comes to disability, that claim is a continuous claim and it goes up to almost five years after the initial date, but it still doesn't change the dollar amounts, which is really what your real question is, if I'm carrying that correctly.
Yeah, I don't think the complaint was that his medical wasn't paid. I think the thing was, is if he didn't have a job that he had either time off or other coverage, other people wouldn't, I guess we need to figure out how to.
Do you have someone in the fire department that don't have medical coverage? Cause that's kind of scary thing.
Well.
I think they all might have coverage.
A lot of them might have insurance at work, but it's not gonna.
Cover something.
If they have to be off.
Yeah.
And pay them being off. Their, their insurance won't pay them getting hurt, but they didn't go pay them being off because it didn't happen on.
Yeah.
But generally the disability policies, that will, even at work, okay? Will still pay for a disability where it happens at work or not, okay? Because that's, disability is separate on that basis, okay? I mean, cause, yeah, disability on your medical insurance is for you when you're disabled somehow where it's work related, because if you're disabled at work, I mean, one of the reasons why I say that disability is different, because workers' compensation generally would cover disa- disability, okay? It just, it doesn't cover for the fireworkers, fire, firemen or the policemen. Uh, if Kathy was working that, there at work there and she walked out and trips and injured herself, the workers' comp's gonna both cover her medical, then it will cover also any type of lost wages or disability that might happen, okay? That's generally how the work comp comes.
What?
Okay, so.
What we're doing, these are volunteers, don't work for the town.
Right, cause you're an employee, that's the difference.
But I was trying to say, if they do have a disability insurance, it probably will cover them no matter what they're doing.
Okay, alright, alright, we'll use this then, one, if they don't have insurance at work, we'll use that example.
What you're saying is, you've gotta make sure when we look at the, the accident policy, what kind of benefits are there from a weekly wages or on that basis, okay?
I mean, obviously, we're at two different spectrums, so we need to just have something that you could, not, they don't need to live like kings when they're off of, but they need to be able to just make ends meet and just stay above water and not get.
Yeah, but how do you do that if someone makes a thousand dollars a week and somebody over here makes three hundred dollars a week?
Well, hopefully that thousand dollar.
It's still based on the wages. It'll still be based on a person's wages, right?
Well, not, not the accident policy, the accident policy, there's no wages. Generally, under workers' comp disability or loss of wages is ba- is two thirds of your wages. Okay, two thirds of the wages and that's usually tax exempt, and that's one of the reasons why it's ways two thirds. Under these policies, they got a set weekly amount and it could be like two hundred twenty-five a week or.
Well, I do know in the twenty-two years I've been clerk treasurer, it's not been changed ever, so it probably is kind of out of date. So.
What was it?
Unless it's.
I reckon we're forgetting that. Halfway, take care of our volunteers too. So, can we, I reckon looking at up and at a little bit, which I know it's one hundred percent.
What I'll do is, I'll contact the accident people and see what all plans they have available from that.
That's basically what we're getting at, you know, if a guy gets hurt and he's only, he only makes, can draw a hundred thirty dollars and he volunteering is actually, in some cases, is life. To do, he's not, you know, I mean.
It says weekly income benefits, total disability, that's total though, two ninety, partial disability. Would that be just while they're off? Menden? Cause that's only one forty-five.
Yeah, that's what, cause that, I thought this was what, what we were talking about. Yeah, see, this is just. Weekly income, it tells what, if they're totally disabled, yes, it's two ninety a week. And stuff like that, and one forty-five for partial.
So then, it also kicks on, in on medical, but work comp doesn't cover?
That is correct.
So it's a thousand, one sixteen, I'm not roughly then.
These are optional that we don't have in our policy.
Down here, you have the extent, you have extended total disability and long term.
See, he.
Well, yeah, they didn't put those in.
I know all medical is covered. Is that copays and everything for like when he goes, when you go, it's all of it, cause it's, cause it's workman's comp.
But it shouldn't be any copays under there, this.
Cause it's, yeah.
Yeah.
For like, for therapy and.
Not like using your insurance.
Right.
Okay, well.
I didn't know if they had to pay upfront and then got it back later as well, I was.
With this medical here.
Should be waived because of workman's comp.
Sometimes there might not be a work comp policy in place, in place, and that's where this medical, so this is,
Okay.
This accident policy would provide medical if there was not a work comp policy in place, but a work comp policy's in place and that way you got a hundred percent medical, not a cap on medical.
Okay.
So actually what we're doing is looking to raise this two ninety? We're looking at.
That's for total disability.
That's total, not.
So if he's partial, he's gonna go for five a week.
And it was, because he did lose the tip of his finger, he was paid that for that, right?
Yeah, that's what.
He got partial. Even at that, that's only five eighty, that would lump, I mean, that's.
That's why the injury, permanent impairment and all this other stuff comes into place, they pay up a certain percentage on that basis.
That's probably based on a certain scale they have to go by, I mean, like for the loss of.
Right.
Whole finger or partial finger.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably a percent of.
You start, the best one I know is an arm worth a hundred thousand, okay? And so if you lose the arm, then that's a hundred thousand, you half up at fifty, they go from there. But sometimes you get like rotator cuffs, the doctor Mike comes back and say, he's fifteen percent partial, so they'll take fifteen percent.
Full range of.
They don't have full range, especially when the rotator cuff, they'd be like that, so they'll take fifteen percent of that hundred thousand and that's a a settlement they give them like that, on that basis.
So mainly that's what you're worried about is the weekly amount, if they can't go to their normal employment?
Right, like if they, I mean, they could have insurance at work, but what if?
If they don't?
Or what if they don't have time, like workdays, sick days, any days, and then, so they're not gonna get paid, so then if they're getting paid a hundred and forty-five dollars a week, I mean, yes, it's better than nothing, but it's not a lot either, I mean, it's not enough to.
And it's generally less of what workers' comp would pay for loss of wages also, cause they're paying two thirds of your wages. It's one forty-five, I'm assuming it's not even close to one third, like that, but again, like you said, they have a set dollar because they know these are more volunteers, so there, there's no wages at all, generally it is sometimes.
Right.
Okay. But that, I, I know what you're, now I know what you're asking me.
Yeah, just based off of, I mean, you know, like, for instance, if my husband goes, he's the breadwinner of the family, if I lose that money there, my pay is not gonna cover what we need to cover just for basic living for that, so I, I mean, I'm not saying we need to raise this to where it's huge, but it definitely isn't.
Come in.
Well, it's something that a volunteer can think about, okay?
Right.
If I get hurt out here helping there and then, well, why should I?
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta look at it in that sense too.
Absolutely.
I mean, why should I come volunteer if, if I lose that, then I ain't got, if I get hurt on that, helping somebody, then my job don't cover me, I'm, me and my family could lose everything, cause I volunteer.
How do you come up with a basic amount though?
That's probably more economics than it is anything else. We'll go to the Karen, I say, tell me what it costs to increase these weekly wages up there and they'll, they'll tell me what it would cost up there and I'll just come back to you and tell you what it would be. I mean, and then.
That's about the only way we're gonna find out, right?
Yeah, and that's where you go from there, okay?
Yeah, that's what we're after, trying to.
Two or three different scenarios or whatever.
Exactly. And there is some life insurance involved into, you see the life, I mean, life and benefits there is very minimal, but again, I know firsthand what it means if someone loses their spouse, okay? At a, a certain different ages and everything like that.
Right.
And stuff like that, so, so I know what you're exactly saying, especially if you got a female at home who's just a, one of the housewife and they have a newborn child and their husband's the one that's out there making X amount of dollars and stuff like that. It, it's, it's somewhat minimal, so.
Right, yeah.
Thank you very much, now I'm starting to understand where we're coming from.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kinda, that's what I think for me was more of the concern on figuring out.
Not knowing all the end and out of workman's comp too, that makes it.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess we just need to go forward, like you said, and just put out, okay, if we raise it to this, what, what would be total cost over for the client and then decide after that how to move forward.
Like I said, um, in, cause the workers' compensation is very inexpensive.
But I mean, if the workman's comp covers all of the medical.
Right.
Yeah.
That's not an issue, that's good, then, we're good there, it's the other item that we, that accidental policy probably is what we need to maybe go get more.
And like I said, that, and I'll jump on that even though it's not a, until a September agreement policy, I'll, I'll have that information ready for you.
So we'll have it ahead of time?
Probably by, hopefully I'll have it by the middle of the month, I can email real quickly and ask them the questions on that part, everything like that.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kathy, is the accidental part split between Ashley and you also?
Both policies are, split half and half. That's why I wanted her to be here, cause it affects their budget too.
I knew the workman's comp was, I didn't know about that.
No, both of them.
Both are.
Okay. Cause we have township and.
Right. I mean, hopefully we don't have anything that really needs it, but.
We always hope nothing ever happens, nobody needs it, but.
But I'd rather have us prepared, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that was my main concern with it all.
That'll work for us if we can.
Get us in a version.
So, okay, that's what we're gonna do there, so we've got our regular, all our package insurance, uh, renews in March. I think you brought some stuff for that that you did. You wanna keep it, you guys wanna keep your copies since you're on fire department? They have it filed out the fire department, but I can't tell you where it's.
Yeah.
Unless you found it and put it somewhere.
You know what?
I thought you'd tell me at one time you kind of got some of that stuff, yeah, cause I gave it to Skip.
He gave it to Skip and we talked about it the other day, so I think he knows where that.
If, if you have, give them a copy, you have a copy.
Do you have your work comp, your brother makes a copy of that too?
We're gonna put that, yeah.
When I hit first.
Ashley, did you have any questions? If you don't, I'm not welcome to stay, but if you don't want to, that's what's gonna be on the town's insurance.
Okay.
But you're welcome to stay if you wanna get out of the house for a little while longer.
I'll stay for a little bit, not someone, but I'm good.
I went ahead and just put the summary on top for you and everything like that. It shows like last year's premium, this does not include the workers' compensation, okay? Uh, but this is the package, last year's package, as you can see, was forty-six, one oh eight. The renewal was forty-nine thousand, four fifty-six, so it's like a thirty-three hundred dollar increase. Uh, most of that is, was in, was increasing the, uh, building coverage on like six items. On those, and on that next page, you will see the items that they talked about increasing the coverage on. And I included cost estimators, how they came up with, with increasing the coverages on those buildings. And, uh, the automobile went up only cause we increased the values of, of the emergency vehicles and everything like that.
And their inventories.
So, on, like, all our property or like buildings, does our insurance cover replacement costs on all of that or portion of?
We tried, I'm gonna answer the question, that part, the, the, the values were increased on these particular buildings cause they did a replacement cost estimator, what it would cost to replace those buildings. So the idea is what we're trying to do is make sure that we have enough value on these buildings to replace it.
That's why I was asking, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, to say that they're gonna, they're not gonna exceed the value that we haven't insured for, that's why we keep increasing the value, just like we try to increase the value on that fire truck and stuff like that to make sure we have replacement cost to where we don't get caught on that basis. And of course, they've talked about the duck bills and everything like that.
And I think, one thing I might have, I sent you Skip's information, but did we discuss the town police car? Did we add anything to that for replacement?
Yes, we insured. Well, it's, it's part of the automobile portion of it, okay, cause it wouldn't be part of that.
Yeah.
That's that information that your police chief gave me to you, well, not this year, but last year. And then, of course, he's got his vehicle, last I knew, it's hunting crew collision.
Yeah. So, but I mean, do every year, do we need to increase that, um, replacement on it?
Do we need to increase them, we don't need to, I just wanna make sure that if you've got a fire truck out there that if it's damaged, I wanna make sure there's enough money that you don't have more than your thousand dollar duck bill.
So, what if they?
But if we purchase a new vehicle, say, two years from now, we get a new truck and the values, when, we wanna make sure it.
Right.
Right, but what if we, what if we purchased something that's pretty substantial to add to that vehicle? Should we update that and then if it's significant amount of money, up, up that then?
That's correct.
Okay. It's like, kinda like if you add on an addition to the house, you need the.
Yeah, right, you don't wanna, you know, add forty dollars to your house, you only got.
You only have a little.
Four fifteen, insurance, yeah, I was saying, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm left in fifteen minute drive from, so it's easy to come up here anytime.
We appreciate it.
And I'm the one that likes to be in person, I hate to say that, okay?
Right.
It's just like when you, they did that loss control, I came up here so we can
Yeah.
do the, uh,
It helps a lot.
I don't know what they call it, screen test or, I mean, I'm not screen test, where you.
Evaluate it, no?
Yeah, well, I have it on fire where you can, live chat or what you call it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we appreciate.
Bobby doesn't like that option, he likes in person.
I'd rather have somebody that you can talk to, not no machine and.
Look at that and.
And then there for people.
To look at him and then re-ask the question the way we're asking it, to make sure we have the answers that way.
Connected to the library?
Is police department connected to the library?
On our policy?
Well, we probably need to discuss that, where do you see that happening?
Right here on this page.
Town hall library.
Yeah, it needs to be two.
Cause actually, we still have to insure the building though, I mean, whether there's a police station in there or anything else. The library's gonna take that portion over after we do get it cleaned out this spring, but.
But then do we have that, is that building up there?
Oh, okay, okay.
He's insured there.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't make a difference, would it? The town marshal's office used to be at the end of the library building. He's moved up here now in the new pole barn, but we do have that insured there.
Right.
But the town still has to insure the library building, would that make a difference in the?
That they're listed here conjointly instead of two separate identities, basically.
It, it won't make a difference, cause that building is based upon, we take the total square foot of each other building, how we name them, I think that's one of the questions they asked me earlier, is that we got maybe different names on these buildings and stuff like that. The best thing for me to do is print off a new statement of values and if we wanna change or personalize the, personalize the buildings to what it makes more sense to you, at least it does.
Cause you've got a lot better building now than what you had.
Yeah.
So I wonder what that means.
You can see we increased the fire station and the water tower, the utility going and the pump house. The only, the only policy that really, that she'll, she'll get bills on will be the workers' compensation. Those are the only two policies, those are the policies that have to be paid before we actually do data to policy, okay? The other stuff, we don't do anything till you actually say we're ready to do it and then we work through the details on filling of that stuff.
So, we probably need to go ahead and approve the premium for the workman's comp. And does everybody understand with that, it's, it's an estimated premium and then the next year, they do an audit on your payrolls from this year and then they'll see if you, like, you owe more, you got credit or. So basically, this is just based on an estimation of past payrolls, am I saying that correctly?
They're taking the last, the last audit and that's the payrolls they're using.
For this premium and then yearly, they do the same thing, they reconcile it.
So it can fluctuate even throughout the year.
The workers' compensation policy is the only policy that's audited, which basically means that that premium could be a little increase or a little decrease, last year was, it was an increase and, and and that was really just a, a few dollars of increase and the hard-nosed auditor wanting to classify somebody's payroll a certain way.
Yeah, oh yeah, that was an exception though.
Yeah, so we know not to do that.
But this is, I am looking at the. But this is, I am looking at the correct renewal amount.
That is correct.
And then also, we do have to go ahead and get this approved and paid, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so those two's the only ones until we approve this and then.
That is correct, those are the only, those are the only ones that really, the payment has to be in there to make sure you have coverage. The only thing that you might wanna do is that, you might just do, we can just send the two checks in on the fire carpet together, or just send in one check.
On our end, it's tricky because of the audits.
Okay.
I don't know if you, you could get away with writing the check to the town to cover that portion of that, do you know?
I don't know, like, I thought I could.
For us, for us to issue one to you?
Yes, that would.
And then, well, you see.
It's two different things.
We only expect it so much yearly to pay that, that amount, so that's why we do the two checks. We send them together so it doesn't get mixed up.
I know that, but we're talking about they're gonna mix up. Cause two years ago, they mailed back a check.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and just, I'm, I'm just.
Right.
So, or it's probably best to go online and pay it, maybe.
I can't.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to, I don't want that same mix up.
I can't do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, they oughta be able to figure it out, because we always send a copy of the invoice, it's got the breakdown. It says township, it says town.
Do not send one back. Or total them together.
Try a different avenue of, uh.
Okay, just, just send the two checks and the invoice together, and, and I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
A week after you mail it in.
Because we're sending these directly to the working team.
Then I'll follow up, yeah, a week from when you mail it in to go from there.
Okay.
Oh, goodness.
So, I mean, this is a special session, so it's open to the public. We can go ahead and approve these now.
I'll make the motion. What do you mean, say?
To approve the workmen's.
Okay, fire department work comp would be in the amount of one thousand one hundred forty-six. Went up just a tad bit, Ashley.
Okay.
That's the total premium, that's gonna be split out of twenty-two.
Yes, yes. Uh, one thousand one hundred forty-six, half is paid by the town, half by township.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the town's, uh, work comp policy, which renews on March thirteenth in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars.
How much was that?
Nine thousand eight hundred sixty-five.
And this?
That's the town's work comp policy, the town's.
We're gonna make a motion to approve the town's workman's comp.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What do you think about your renewal coming?
They made for us and all that, that ain't about to, what, increase on?
Well, do we? I'll just, nevermind. That increases based upon the exposure, you gotta remember that they've also paid out a three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar claim and another claim.
Yeah.
I don't even think, I mean.
Well, I think today's paying three thousand dollars up for what we just.
And they just increased the value.
Thing and what we have, I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We gotta have insurance, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Everything taken care of for you, and the next thing all I need to do is work on your accidental debt, or accident benefits, whatever.
So, I'll just wait for the invoice for this.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was good.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, wait, or tonight, I can normally grab it and bring it up right now.
Probably Tasha's gonna run it with, I better have her run it tomorrow, because it does renew on the thirteenth. Right, that way with the mail the way it is.
Yeah.
She's coming down the road, she's gonna have Barbie drive with the dog. She's driving it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll just type up some type of letter letting them know that one check is from the township.
I guess we really have to write it out.
Yeah, it's fine. That'll work, Asha, thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
When he gets totals back to us or scenarios, if he's coming to a meeting, I'll let you know, or I'll just forward that email to you.
Yeah, that's fine, either way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we need to adjourn this portion or are we just moving?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we can't start the regular one.
But we can adjourn this one, cause it's set up as two separate, even though they're both open to the public.
I make a motion, there you go, I said it.
I can't hit stop.
They're stealing their thunder.
Pardon me, you can or can't?
So, I can't hit stop till you adjourn.
Right, we're adjourned.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody got copies on minutes of the previous meetings? If I had a motion to, uh, accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the January twenty-sixth.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, claims and warrants. End of month, January is four thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Fit where twenty-sixth meeting, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, payroll warrants, two, three, twenty-two, two-ten, two-seventeen, and two-twenty-four, in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred and four dollars and eleven cents. End of month, uh, January, bank reconciliations, utilities, two million six hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. The town is eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, two hundred and fifty, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Payroll, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. And the customer depreciation is thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-six cents.
I'll make a motion to accept the claims and warrants and also the payroll. And do I have to do them all separate?
No, cause he presented them all together.
And the bank reconciliations.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we've got, uh, voided checks for the period of one-one, two thousand nineteen to twelve thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. Uh, customer deposit, check number five-eight-eight-seven, for two hundred and twenty dollars ninety-six cents. Uh, utility account, check number two-five-six-two-six, in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents. And the utility account, uh, check number two, two-six-one-oh-four, for fifteen dollars and a total of three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to accept the voided checks for period oh-one, oh-one, twenty-nineteen to twelve thirty-one, twenty-nineteen.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We've got one lawn meter adjustment for forty-one dollars and ninety-seven, ninety-seven cents. We have two billing adjustments, uh, four thousand six hundred and, uh, thirteen dollars write-offs, already been approved. And another one for sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll make a motion for the lawn meter and the two billing adjustments.
All right, thank you. All right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Cindy?
Just a minute.
Really? Diana?
I have two or three things. First, I'd like to thank the town for their, um, support during the chili cook-off this past Saturday. We had a great turnout, uh, had ten teams that, uh, brought chili for tasting. And, um, our illustrious town marshal won People's Choice. And, uh, Jason Frazier and Justin Cole won the coveted Golden Ladel. So, it was, it was good time, we, uh, we did well with our auction items and, and, uh, our donations. And it was just a lot of fun, so thank you for your support of that. Um, while we were there, we, uh, passed out, uh, the new, the survey. Cindy helped us to, um, uh, get a survey, sorry Penny, um, to, uh, put together a survey to be used to help us put the, um, application together for the five-year park master plan. She also created a QR code, so if you'd like to use the QR code, you can just take a picture of it and, um, use this on your phone to go to the internet and go to the Survey Monkey website and, uh, complete the survey online. And, um, the, that's the, the big process we have going right now is trying to collect the surveys, because the last time that we submitted the five-year park master plan, the DNR rejected it because we did not have enough public input. So, that's what we're trying to keep from happening this time.
These surveys need to be completed by residents of Monzuma, right?
Uh, anyone who uses the parks.
Okay.
So, it doesn't necessarily have to be someone that lives here. Yes. Cause I know there are a lot of baseball and softball parents that use the parks as well, so we want them to fill out the, the surveys well. At our last meeting, uh, we had asked, I, when I spoke to Cindy, one of the many times I spoke with her in trying to get the five-year park master plan updated, um, I asked her if she would like to join us as a member of the park board. And last meeting, the park board voted to accept her as a member. So, I'm asking the council to approve Cindy Todd as a member of the Monzuma Park Board. It's a formality, okay? You have to do this.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate that.
Do we have to make a motion?
Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
I don't remember, I think you guys make all the appointments, don't you, though, to the park board?
Yeah.
We did that first year, and then after that, they hold their own election, and then.
I know.
Yeah, I think you do it like.
Motion to approve the park board. Well, we're gonna get a motion then.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Also, as part of gathering this information from the public for the five-year park master plan, we need to, um, have a public meeting. And I had sent everyone on the council an email asking this, but, uh, could we have a public meeting uh, next Thursday, March the third, at five o'clock, right before the council meeting? Would that be, um, a conflict with anything else you have planned?
I don't think we're.
All right. Um, Cindy said, we don't have to advertise it in the newspaper, but we would need to put it on the, um, Facebook page and the website and all that, so I can submit that.
I don't know what you have.
I think you have to notify them, you don't have to advertise it.
Is it a?
Cause I think it's state code, that's, yeah.
But that's just, it's DNR, which is different than our other grants, cause they're not applying for anything, they're just putting together their master plan.
Well, is, is that okay?
How do you have to do it? We don't have anything at five before the other one.
So, we felt like there might be more people here if we had it right before council meeting. So, if we can have that at five o'clock on March the third, that would be awesome. Okay, anything, or, did I miss anything?
Well, I say, Maggie, you can put it in the paper so that I can put an application for publication.
Yeah, okay, that would be.
I can put it in the community calendar.
Oh, that would be great. Okay, I think that's all I have, unless I think of something else. So, thank you, yeah, yeah.
Penny?
I've got, um, I've got, um, our yearly report for softball, and so we got to play last year, so I've got one for everybody. Do you wanna pass it out? Do you want me to read it or just leave it with you?
Here's your receipt, thank you.
I'll read it. Projects for, uh, girls softball, double defense and solid defense in front of blue and green dugouts, painted green dugouts. Purchased a side-by-side from Real King to work on field, El Empire Clinic, with twelve teenagers involved from Park and Bermaine County. Uh, purchased new microwave for concession, had annual face drive with baseball, tore up team men on blue field, around bleachers, added white rock, trimmed trees. Got two new sponsors, Quality Fence and Howard Clare Insurance, covered rich fence. Cover Bridge Festival annual ham and bean stand downtown. League teams four with 52 girls, around 12 adults helping. Travel team, four teams with 46 girls and 15 adults helping. League games played on field for 30 from April to June. Held eight-and-under Cover Bridge League 30 in June with 11 teams.
Played third fall season with 180 girls, eight-and-under, 10-and-under, 12-and-under, plus 48 adults. We used our three fields and one of the boys' fields, played 25 games in August. First of October stopped a few days before the Bridge Festival. Played on Thursday and Thursday. Towns participating were Monzuma, Cuba, Rosedale, Bloomingdale, Clinton, and Rockville. Twenty-two projects, paint the blue dugout, work on fields, get back in shape and add brick dust and purchase new home plate. Remove old shed at Green Field, purchase a building to house the side-to-side. Purchase a new batting cage net and pour the batting cage floor with cement to keep weeds out. Uh, 2021 league coaches, eight-and-under Chelsea Pointer, eight-and-under Cody Moretto, ten-and-under Amanda Burleson, 12-and-under Casey Moore. 2021 Indiana force coaches, 12-and-under PJ Mormon, 16-and-under Mike Lucas, 16-and-under Sean Bordenman, and 18-and-under Sean Bordenman. This is by Penny Cox, Monzuma Girls Softball.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can read it if you want.
No, keep it up. Keep kids involved in something.
Yeah, we're doing registrations right now on Saturdays and it'll be starting on the first of April with practice and games in May.
John?
So I called, uh, Honey Creek Collision today to get an update on the truck. Uh, they told me it was at Sir Thomas Automotive getting, what I understand, which that was part of the agreement to begin with, that they would do the bodywork and they would subcontract the mechanical, swapping the motor over and all that. So that's where it's at. And he said, "Once they get it back to Honey Creek, it ought to be, uh, two to three weeks potentially." But he didn't really have a hard timeline. So he would get back with me. We're discussing some decal issues. I've emailed you all pretty much everything that I'm gonna talk about more in depth, but if you have any questions. Uh, we were awarded the grant through the Park County Community Foundation, which will, uh, will be able to purchase the cordless impact and the impact sockets. That'll help us out a bunch. Not that we change a lot of tires, but there's a lot of times when we get people stranded on the side of the road and just having better equipment to be able to help the citizens out. And reduce our exposure to traffic hazards is a good thing. I've been working probably one meeting a week, depends on, it can be two to four hours with Lexipol, rewriting the policy manual like we discussed. Hope to have that rolled out sometime mid-spring, I hope. The Explorer's gonna need new tires. I've been watching them since I took over here and, uh, it was just kind of a part-time vehicle, wasn't real pressing, but now that it's on the road every day, we're gonna have to do something. So we're gonna purchase them on the state bid and, uh, I reckon it's up to Kathy whether we take it out of vehicle maintenance or whatever. It's gonna be a substantial chunk of our vehicle maintenance, cause I think it's only $100 or something. So we may have to make it a lot more than that for the year. However you guys wanna handle that, that's fine, but we have to have new tires. Our email system with the state, we, I think that I've covered it with everybody, but we're pretty much the pilot program for offering government-issued email addresses to towns. The initial quote they gave me was like $17.99 and we've got down to $6 a month per user. I think Kathy's actually gonna take the Office Girls on board because, uh, Northwest Cable or whatever they're using now...
Sparklight.
Sparklight is ending email services. And that comes with a whole lot of cybersecurity stuff, which there's a huge push on that right now, so... The other thing that being the trial program, it's taking a little bit longer. There's some headaches because they've never done it before. But if any other town would come along once we get going, the, uh, activation fee or, uh, that's what I call it. They got some fancy word for it. But basically it's $3,500 is what they charge you to set that up and we're getting it for free, so, uh, it's been a good thing. Other than that, it's pretty much business as usual unless you guys got some questions for me.
Through the state bidding on the tires? Where, where are you, where do you do that at? Like what, do you get different quotes from different people that accept the state bidding?
So...
Or no?
I was given the information through the Sheriff's Department and basically I had to fill out an app with this tire hub. And so they'll order, like NKP or whoever we want to put them on will order the tires. She says that you wanna do it this way, the lady at NKP, she said, because we can't compete, I mean...
See, Marty Jeffries has that.
Good thing.
I, I think I can do a little bit better.
I mean, it should be all the same if it's state bidding.
It's a, it's a different, I don't know, different outfit, but it's the same thing, that he can get a cheaper price with, with these guys.
And wherever you get to have it mounted, ask them about the, if they got anything with the rotation of tires. A lot of places sell tires a little bit cheaper, but when you go to get tires rotated at $8 a tire and every other oil change tires need to be rotated to get your, none of them, a lot of places don't. Some, you know, sell the tires and no honor the rotation.
The issue that I've had in the past with, I personally like to rotate the tires myself because the issue I've had in the past, and I'm not speaking on anybody specific, but they just get their, uh, impact wrench out and they don't torque your lug nuts down, which causes huge issues with brakes, especially on police cars, cause they get so hot. If they don't torque them down to spec, it puts those...
For most of them, that's what that rattle stick, it they use on the impact gun is a rattle stick and that is for that torque.
But I, I had to have a tire fixed the other day, cause the ice knocked the valve core out or boused in out. And I watched the kid just get the impact out and just pound it on.
He didn't have that, that on him?
So without being able to watch him, I...
Yeah. Well, that's fine. Rotate them.
As long as they're done.
Yeah. I mean, we just...
Thank you for working on that grant, John, and for...
All your records.
Yes.
Skip?
I just got a couple of things. Uh, nine runs, nine runs for the month of February, so we've slowed down a little bit. It's not gonna, it stays that way. Uh, parts are still on order for the overhead doors. Haven't heard anything back on that. I don't think PK has either. I know last time we talked about the fuel tank. Uh, any status change on that or any...
I, I talked to him and I talked to 40 other people and the last thing I heard from him, which was, I think, last week, was the guy was, I said five, just start out 500 gallons and we'll go, go from there. And he said he's looking for tanks. And I haven't heard anything since last week.
Okay.
I think it's a matter of rush, it's gonna take a lot of our gas anyway, so... Uh, our active 911 is due in, uh, April. Looking to see if, uh, take it out of our budget. $260 for the year on that. 20 firefighters have access to 911. We've been paying for it in the past, but, uh, we've had a little bit of money left over at the end of the year in budget to see if we could have that issue.
And what'd you say that was to?
It's active 911.
Active 911.
Pays for over paging and stuff like that from, uh, Over Dispatch. Gives us mapping addresses and...
It also gives you notification per call when county's down.
Within your budget?
Yeah, if it's, if it's feasible.
Oh, I said, "Do you, do you guys know? Do you have a preference where to reappropriate it from?"
Uh, let me look into that.
Just let me know.
And that's all we got. Thanks for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Christian Beaver. I'm a candidate for State Senate. And I came here and I wanted to learn about Monzuma. I've been getting around throughout all these counties to meet the people and learn how I can do a good job for you in the state legislature. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you and Scott, if you want to pass these around for me. These cards have...
He makes the rounds with meetings.
He's seen me a few times. Some of the people here have. So these cards have my cell on them and I hope to be able to get to speak with each of you, answer any questions you may have. We're gonna have, uh, town hall meetings in each of the counties, uh, where you'd be able to come and talk to me and ask any questions if you want. Of course, you guys can reach me anytime. So thanks for having me here tonight and look forward to talking with you.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck in your pursuit.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing answers and paying.
You're welcome.
Contract was approved for HWC, $12,000 to do the ADA Transition Compliance Plan, but it was not decided where they appropriated the pay from. This was, of course, not factored into 2022 budget, so we'll have to decide where the money can come from and reappropriate to cover the cost. Some, some of the costs and some out of, uh, MBH and some out of general.
I make a motion to take it out of the MBH and general fund.
Split it.
Whatever the best.
But where do you wanna reappropriate it from? Is my question. You've got, you've got, um, quite a bit put in for new structure or improvements on building?
I was thinking one of those places you say and look at it in detail, but those would be... Yeah, cause you probably have to spend that. Yeah, probably.
Probably.
What do you say, Scott?
Oh, maybe do 80, maybe 8,000 out of MBH, 4,000 out of general, something like that. And then, uh, take it out of that money for building or other improvements, that kind of stuff. I mean, um, don't know that you're gonna do any of that stuff this year anyway, so... We didn't, we would've, if we would've known ahead of time, we would've budgeted some money for professional services and used it. So we gotta find money somewhere and move it up. The money to do the paving itself will probably mostly come out of another fund that's called MBH Restricted. Something the legislature will hopefully fix at some point, since we have to...
What a pain that is to have to split that money up and then you can, so much of it has to be spent.
Out at night here.
A real hassle.
I have a motion to do what you just said.
Well, I mean...
Out of new structure, is that what you're doing with what I would say?
Yeah. Which line I'm at, Kathy? I knew I was close to... That might be fun.
Yeah. Page three.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be maybe 4,000 out of there, you think, and feed out somewhere in MBH. There was, that was at MBH when I was looking at it.
Might be anything that I want to happen.
That's one of the ones. General fund. So maybe 4,000 out of there and, um... Take it out of Quirky Treasure Sower. You're gonna have the word delivered properly, Kathy. So you, uh, you could take, could you take some of it out of here, Kathy? Is that 201?
Yeah, cause that's where it's going to send them now, but...
Right.
They're restricted and MBH, all one fund, but we just keep it tally with the different fund number. But there's one there because we've got some stuff back. Yep, that would be good. And then we'll see what we're...
We got an idea.
So you'd like to motion to take $4,000 out of new structure appropriation?
Yes.
By the general fund? And then the 8,000 out of MBH, remove 4,000 from the paving appropriation? Does that sound good? Yes.
Okay. Set it to that one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll set that.
On favor. Oh. On favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. There was a work card to request of a park that we, uh, repenched all the park benches and so forth. And last time it was done, it was done in the shop and it was, uh, some issues with the resin quality and the fumes and so forth. Brad has planned to do it as soon as the weather breaks gets started. It'll take a while to do the number of tables and benches.
Need to keep in mind that the benches are earmarked for certain places to, if you ever bought them, that's where they run them, so... And we've got a list, but...
I think... Was there more added after you sent me that updated list? Do you remember?
We haven't sold any for quite a while and we're not gonna be selling anymore. We're done.
I'm definitely letting you know that, but I was wondering, that flow barn over there, how expensive would it be to finish that flooring in there? At least with gravel or...
A whole bunch.
It would?
Still ain't got no heat or anything in it, so you can't, you can't do it in the winter time.
When it warms up.
Well, I still, I mean, that, I thought that's why we put the new furnace in, so you wouldn't have the smell in the office in there. So I mean, and...
I don't care if they try it, but if the fumes are as bad as they were before, then... I hope I have your backing from all of you to shut it down, because I had to send Tasha home. She was deathly sick. I sent candy home. I stayed, but it was not pretty.
And the only thing they're using now is Thompson mortar ceiling. They're not using any other...
So they'll have to put any varnish or anything on them?
No.
To protect them from the weather?
Nope, that's what Thompson's for.
They'll try it, but if you gotta shut it down, shut it down.
And then we'll try something else, maybe?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, a couple of them went around to right where they was at.
Yeah, and they weren't done like they should've been. That's why I said it's gonna take a while.
It's gonna take some work to get them cleaned up right in order to, and telling the power, I'd be glad to come and help him.
I don't think picnic, the picnic tables are the issue. I think there's only one or two of them.
The benches are more than...
Where they put graffiti on them or something, but the benches, they had the wrong coating put on them and they...
All that peels up and they look like, never mind.
Diana, do you have that list saved, so you can send me a new one?
Sure.
So we make sure we get them all?
I don't know when I sent you the last one, but I doubt it's changed too much, but I'll be glad to send you a new one.
Cause there's supposed to be 35 total, is that correct?
Probably about right, yes. And I think that's about right.
Excuse me. Mike Gossett, uh, Don's Lawn Care, quoted about moving contract for coming season. He stated he would do it for the same price as last year, which is $3,750. I mean, I've for that, he's done a pretty good job.
I make the motion that Don's Lawn Care...
Second.
...and Molly and Don Drive for 2022.
You got a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron Bailey, Life Formation Attendant, PFAS and WW Foster's Removal Training, Thursday, March 3rd in Converse, Indiana, for the cost of $30. He warned some of his continuing education credits without training.
Make the motion.
Second.
Let him go to school.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next one's a, Brad McRanahan turned in his late letter of resignation. And he was the effect, well, it's going to, he changed his mind, but his last days to 23, 22. And, uh, Brad McRanahan knows somebody that's interested in the position, that does already have a CDO. And Brad McPernahan knows somebody that's interested in the position, that does already have a CDO class A license, so. I guess the question is, do we want to interview? Do we want to do like we did the last fellow? Nick and I just talked to him, or do we wanna do that? You know, last time when the hard answer, he just talked to Nick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can do it either way. Can't we do it?
It's up to you guys. I mean, if you, if you want to, if there's somebody that you think's good and qualified for it, you know. You've advertised enough for your jobs. Anyone who's ever wanted one in Montezuma, you're gonna know about it now. If you, if you know some, if there's somebody you think might be qualified and you just want to go directly to them and interview them, that's fine.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
It don't have to be just me and you.
Yeah, anybody that wants to.
Yeah, you don't get more than three of them.
Most likely it'll be a lot of network, so you go ahead.
You guys go ahead.
Want to set that up, yeah? Can you do that, please? Thank you. Okay.
Only thing I got to just thank everybody and John, first chance again, if you would, probation off the top part. See if anybody's got any. Gosh, I can't think, I lost it now.
Community service.
Community service. We appreciate that. We're getting the cemetery, everybody knows how the sticks are. And it takes quite a while to clean it up right prior to the mowing contract. So if anybody's got any, I'd be willing to buy time, you know, make sure. I know a couple, it's probably gonna have to.
Include the parks with that too, sticks in the parks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, anywhere that we can use them, but the cemetery, the parks, they can pretty well, not as bad.
Do you want me to direct probation to you?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I signed off on them before with them. But to see if they got anybody and tell them that, let us know. Call, I got.
Now, we've got a thank you card from Candy. For the, thanking everyone for the wind chime when the father passed away, pass that on. I think that's all I got. John?
On the COVID money that we potentially will be getting, it was opened up now that you can use it for multiple different things.
Correct, basically.
So I think I would like to suggest, I know we have a couple of big projects that we've already thought about doing. But if there's any way we could possibly allocate some to public safety for our police department and our fire department for anything that they have upcoming potentially that they're going to need. Based on the fact that most of their stuff is budgeted, so sometimes like tires or, like you just said, that's something that just came up. With other things, I know we can generate money through our utilities. So we have a few things at the police department that potentially could need money put into to update. Fire department might have some stuff. I haven't talked to them in depth to know if they have some outstanding items that they're needing. So I didn't know if there was a way that we could maybe allocate a portion of that money potentially for some, some out of sight, out of mind type items that they haven't.
I, I don't remember off the top of my head, you know, we talked, we definitely are gonna be putting a big chunk of it towards the water tank.
Right.
But, you know, the idea was to save some part of that for other stuff. And what that other stuff is, is up to you guys. So we can do, there's gonna be some things that we have to adopt as council. And we have to do additional appropriation in order to spend it, but.
I don't, I don't think unless that's changed too, that we can just take money and put in the public safety fund.
You have to spend it out of.
We have to specify and it has to be spent out of there.
So then maybe.
It has to be in your plan.
So maybe then those departments.
It does not have to be in your plan anymore.
It doesn't have to be in.
You can do, your plan will be, we're gonna use the money to reimburse ourselves for lost revenue.
Then we have to appropriate ahead of time before it can be spent.
Have to appropriate it before you spend.
But it has to be spent out of that.
But, but you, but you could spend it out of there for, for police, for fire, for parks, for roads, for whatever you want. There's only like five things you can't spend it for. And there aren't, there aren't things you would spend it for. It's like pension stuff and, and, and stuff like that. So they're not the kind of things you would even think about spending it for. In some ways, it's a good thing that they freed it up. On the other hand, it makes it harder for you because now you have to decide how to spend it, so.
Basically, we don't have to have a plan, but you do.
Well, you do have to have a plan, but your plan.
I'd have a stick to your plan.
Your plan will be, because your plans, they've eased it up. Anything less than ten million, which is a problem that nobody I know has. You can allocate up to ten million dollars for loss, for revenue replacement without proving that you actually lost ten million dollars of revenue. So that, that greatly simplifies things. And once you've allocated it towards revenue replacement, now you can spend it on anything you want.
So we could do, like we're doing the door openers, we could refurnish back that.
You can.
That we was already taking out of.
Well.
Or do it from that?
That's it.
Or no?
You, I guess in some ways you could, but, but it'd probably be easier just to think going forward as stuff comes up.
That's how I was thinking, was if they knew something was coming.
It'd be another step in the process. I think mathematically it'll all be the same. You know, if they got a thousand dollars for something else they needed that they didn't think they was gonna get, then, then that would.
That wasn't per se in their budget.
So we probably ought to have a.
Plan.
Yeah, kind of plan and sit down and really go through how much of that you want to put towards the water tower and how much you want to set aside because the water tower payments will start this year at some point and they're gonna be pretty heavy. You do have quite a bit of money saved up, but. You know, we, we balancing that between increasing the rates on the water versus, versus spending it for other stuff. But it's up to you guys, what you want to spend on them.
Do they have a plan?
Sit down and come and come and walk.
Do they have a plan that will be some future?
To the water tower and.
I'm sure if I ask them to get a plan, they could probably get an idea. Some might have more already over there. I haven't quite dug into that totally yet.
Don't knock each other down.
But there are other things, you know, like, I'm not, but there are, with being able to spend it on anything, like there's, I know parks always needs money for stuff. And cemetery and, and they don't have great ways to generate money either, so. You're gonna have, sewer, I saw the stuff in the sewers. I, I was thinking about using it for sewer when I saw that, that number in there. So it's figuring out what you want to spend on. It's a good problem to have, but it's still something that's gonna make somebody upset because it's.
Like I said, we need to, how much we are going to do toward the water.
Yeah.
And then we know what we got left. We gotta make that total decision.
And we're talking about the hundred eleven bouncing we've already got, then we get.
We're gonna get another hundred.
Another hundred eleven.
In July, it's gonna be spent like.
Twenty twenty-six, I think they extended it out in twenty twenty-six, but where we're going, we're spending it. We'll have a problem meeting that deadline.
So I have a couple more questions. The first thing I need to ask is Jay, in order to keep things moving along, what, do we need to do anything about contacting that freshman from Roseholman?
No, they're supposed to recontact us in March.
In March, okay. I just don't want to let the ball drop and then us not keep things moving on the splash pad, so.
Late March, he's supposed to have his students picked out and, and see how he's gonna proceed from there.
Okay, very good. So they're gonna contact you probably? Okay, good. All right. I just didn't want to let that ball drop. Then, did you guys talk about this? I would like to suggest that we seriously think about this. This bank building is for sale by First Financial. And they have it for sale for seventy thousand dollars. That's not really bad. Paul's been trying to find out exactly how much they paid for it from Old National, which if you look on GIS, it doesn't look like they paid the whole lot. So, and anybody can look that up. I won't say that out loud. But I feel like this would be an awesome building for the town to own if, if the banks are not gonna participate in Montezuma. This has a drive-through window, it has a safe, it has very nice offices. There's a very nice counter in there that could be used to receive customers. And I feel like we should seriously consider this building.
I know there, there is structural issues with that building.
Okay.
If you go down there very often, in the summertime and a real cold weather.
Yes.
The summertime, the top door, part of the door sticks and it's hard to get open and closed. In the wintertime, it's in the bottom.
Yeah.
So that, that building is moving somehow.
It might be that problem.
Well, but I mean.
Could be.
Yeah, we're not gonna buy your house.
But if the price is right, a door could be fixed.
Floating slab's gonna move to a certain point too.
Yeah, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't move this way.
If it's got the crack in the, where the front was poured to the, to a floating slab, if you give anything in there, they can raise and.
Yeah, but it shouldn't go this way.
Well, I feel like it would be an awesome building for the utility office or police station or whatever. And, and it would eliminate issues like the guys can't put shellac or whatever on something out in the garage. And I feel like it would be a very nice facility. So I'd like to bring that up and place it on the table for you to consider seriously. Would somebody look into that? Kathy, what do you think? Seriously?
We've, we've talked about it last couple of months when we know it was going up for sale. Definitely big pros, some cons to be considered, but.
Pros, customers could run up to them and pay and not have to go out.
The only thing I worry about though, with town marshal's office being located there too, we just have to do something structurally.
Don't make him move now.
It would be safer. Well, he's kind of where nobody can find him. They don't really know he's there. I don't think that's a good thing about him.
We might want to wait and see what the ADA.
That's my concern. That's what I'm concerned with all the clients, yeah.
We sit here and talk to, if we don't call back the police station or his office, you don't have to have it like that.
But where is he gonna have people come into if he has to interview or do different things of that sort?
I, I don't think, you know, one of the discussions we had, like Kathy said, we, we had, we got out of the library for, for reason to be the police station exposure.
You don't want him in there with somebody else.
And, and we turn around and go right back to the same facility. That's, that's one issue.
Well, to me, a garage would keep the vehicles in out of what, when possible is good too. Got poor side ball, poor side ball. Make some crock, which there again, I want for the way they done that to begin with. When they build a brand new building, he should have been in a new building. All you done was switch spots and then got one and ain't done.
I'd also consider they're, they're presently working on our ADA compliance plan. There's gonna be dollars that have to be spent there because it's not ADA compliant. Might have to remember that too. See how that comes in.
Why don't we do this? Let's, we need to get next Thursday, Thursday? Let's bring our pros and cons in and then, you know, have more time to discuss.
See if we'll help him find out.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that, just the consideration. Yeah, there is a contact number here on this.
I couldn't find that.
In her, her book of all trades. Yes, I was done.
Nick?
She had a question.
Are we, is it a town that would try to do anything to get banks back in this town?
There's nothing.
Oh, I've asked the other banks if they can there, but it's just.
My buddy.
It all comes back to the same thing as everything goes. If, if they can't make this, they ain't.
They're not gonna build a new building, I don't think, another bank. And they can't use that one.
Well, from what, that's something I'd like somebody to ask for sure.
Well, Cindy said that.
Cindy said that that's not in.
Well.
I come from a, from the stockholders from the bank that nobody else can get go, another bank.
That was not communicated to me when they sent me the flyer.
Okay.
From First Financial, Norm, yeah, Norm Lowery sent me the flyers for that one in Rockville and never indicated that there were any restrictions in the building.
Okay, well, we was told that there was a restriction, no bank could go in.
No, no, no.
He did not restrict it at all. And, I mean, just to Penny's point, I will say, I mean, there's just same thing in, in Rosedale that, you know, banks are not investing in brick and mortar anymore. I mean, so much is happening online and through mobile opportunities that they do not want to hold on to these smaller branches. Even though it's active for the town and it's good for the town, they're not finding the, the benefit on their end. We've, we've tried to persuade some banks to come our way. When Old National moved out and they have no interest in looking at all.
I believe Rosedale did sell, didn't it?
Yeah, it's a coffee shop.
It's a coffee shop, yeah.
Little bear, little bear that one.
It's being worked on anyway.
Yeah.
Supposed to open soon.
Yeah, I don't, you know, if, when they pull the bank out of the county seat, if, they're pretty much set by folks. I mean, in my, in my opinion.
But it's a shame that they've done our small communities this way when we've, you know, supported them and supported them. And then they're that dirty to just duck them.
Yeah.
And I, I agree with you Bob, money is all they can care about.
The whole world's all about greed.
Yeah.
Not today, it ain't.
They don't think of the Wabash Valley and, you know, part of the mound, not anymore. And then they go down and buy a bunch of banks someplace else in another state.
Yeah.
Simply stupid.
Something to look at is in our packet from Ron. I had to get some quotes on the huge down there. For the bubble tank and it's, it, hopefully it can come out, sorry, come out the money that we're talking about.
Well, I saw that in there. I thought the same thing.
But that's, I, I had to get a quote on, I probably had one here on just one of them. There's no use in changing just one, so that's why I just got a quote, and it has went up like everything else. But it's just something to think about after we decide what we're gonna do with, with the money and everything. It needs to be done down there. Changed all three of them. It was twenty, twenty-six thousand nine hundred. It's just something to consider for that money. Because sewer can have it.
Some things is more, because no one get no trouble nowhere down through there, if I want to just spam on it.
Only other thing I have is for John. Down here at Al Lambert's, he's got a trailer down there. He's, somebody's living in.
We just talked about that at the chili cook-off.
Something needs to be done about it. I mean, I don't, I hate, I hate it because people don't come and, and see about ordinances and stuff. They just pull something like that in, throw stuff in it and run a court out of his building. Something needs to be done about it. It's camper, yeah. It's the camper. I don't know who's.
I was kind of watching it progress and I didn't think a whole lot of it initially and then I seen the skirting go on and I was like, a week.
Oh, yeah. That's all I got. It's true enough, I guess. Uh, that's all I got, it's true enough, I guess.
Kathy?
Scott? Contract for the water town, tank project, um, we've been kicking this around for over a year, I think. And, uh, we would've approved this probably last month, or I, we've had some, we had, had some meetings get canceled, but, uh. Uh, this is Suez's contract to, um, come in, it's a, uh, I read through the contract, actually, it was one of the favorite ones I've ever read. Um, for what that's worth, uh, scope of work, they're gonna, you know, rehab the tank the first year, uh, after that, it's yearly maintenance. Same thing he told us, uh, every so many years, they do the inside, um, the payments are, uh, the, the, there's a. Um, it's like a hundred and thirty-six thousand a year for the first three years, then it drops down to twenty-one, and then it goes up no more than five percent a year after that. You can cancel, you can terminate it, um, if you are unhappy about anything, you can terminate it with ninety days' notice before the end of the year. So, if you got into this and you didn't, weren't happy about it, or didn't think you had the money to pay the next year, you could kill it. If you do it in the first couple of years, you, you do have to pay for the, the big work that they've done, but, um, you know, I didn't notice anything that he. Uh, in here that, that was bad or surprising to me, and, um, we know the tank needs to be redone, for sure, and, uh, so. If you are inclined to approve that contract, we can get that signed, they've already signed it, so they're just, he's waiting on us, he's emailed every, after. Every meeting, saying, no, got canceled again, so, um, I don't, we do not have to make that first payment until they're done with, with the rehab.
Did they give us a projected time of when they would start it? No.
No, but he, when he was here, I think, you know, as soon as the weather gets.
So we're kinda in the docket of knowing we're scheduled, and we just have to finalize.
Yeah, now, we may, you know, we may, I don't know if they've got a couple others that are signed before ours now, or something that. But, because, you know, it's, it's been, they signed this in January, so, um, we just, because of our meetings being postponed, it's been a while.
To let the public know there too, in that contract, the seventh year, we'll be paying on payments up to, I forgot what the total is. But the seventh year, that water tower gets painted again during that, it is maintained all the way.
It'll be at seven, Bobby, but seven?
I think, I thought it was ten.
Okay, maybe.
You don't be wrong.
And they, I mean, uh.
And that's in company, that's maintenance agreement, they come in, power wash the inside. And do all this, and keep up on everything as they go through, and then.
Yeah, there's a, and they, they're, I mean, they give detail, I, again, I. What they're gonna do, they're gonna put this mixing system in.
Yeah.
Um.
Keep some water from the.
Lock on the hatch, um, ladder gate, lock-in ladder gate, riser grade, frost proof vent. Remove the ladder cages, uh, they get into the details of, of what they're gonna do here, um, so. And we will make payments for, you're essentially paying for the rehab stuff in those first three years, and then after that, you're just paying for the maintenance, and it's gonna be twenty. If you start with twenty-one thousand a year and go up five percent a year, so by the end of it, you'd be paying closer to thirty, but, um. They will come out and inspect, like I said, it's not just coming out and inspecting, looking at it, it's also some interior stuff every three years, I remember seeing that.
I can't read it.
Exterior screen.
More power worship down.
It does not include, I did, it does not include anything with the, with the foundation. If the foundation, something wrong with the foundation or something like that on the tank, that's on us. Anything above the ground.
Exterior.
They'll take care of it.
All the coat.
But we do have somebody with that expertise.
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Before they're going on.
Well, the twelfth year.
Twelfth year.
We get painted again.
Yeah.
So we'll get one other, we should get one other exterior paint up during the lifetime of this.
And then interior wet is seventeen, they, they do a washout every.
Washout every three.
Three years.
Yeah, washout every three.
And then exterior, and then, and some washout interior, yeah.
The idea hopefully is it would keep your tank.
Oh, yeah.
In your, your shape in twenty years from now, it's, it's still in, it's gonna stay.
Worrying about the, no.
Well, not today, we want it better shape than it is today. Well, we have a signature on that, we made a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion, sign it.
On favor?
Aye, aye.
I made that motion, I'm sorry.
Paul?
Paul.
That's all I have.
Number second.
We both did, but I say it was slower.
I'll make a motion with adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.